Good evening. It is 5:30, it's March 11th. Welcome to the Regular Board of Directors meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and every being just as.
Thank you. Nivea has our land acknowledgement.
Evergreen Public Schools resides on the traditional lands of the Chinookans people and the Cowaldes tribe. They have lived on and cared for this land and its waterways since time immemorial. We thank them for their stewardship and make this acknowledgement to open a space of recognition, inclusion, and respect for all Indigenous students, families, and staff in our community.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is to adopt the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt tonight's agenda.
Second.
Director Boconegra moves to adopt the agenda, seconded by Director Wilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is matters reserved for board action. We have our resolution affirming the rights of undocumented students and protocols for INS and ICE access in schools, access to school. Resolution number 7021. Read it from the screen. A resolution of the Board of Directors of Evergreen Public Schools Vancouver, Washington, affirming the provision of safe, welcoming, and inclusive schools for all students without regard to race, ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, gender identity expression, income level, disability, national origin, or immigration citizenship status. Whereas in the Evergreen Public School strategic plan, the district has promised that we will support all students, our classrooms will be a safe space where students feel a sense of belonging and are motivated to learn every day, and whereas it is the policy of and strongly held belief of Evergreen Public Schools that all schools must be safe and free from the targeting, discrimination, harassment, or bullying of students based on race, nation of origin, religion, immigration status, or any other factor, and whereas the board, whereas the school board recognizes that our nation's and district's diversity is our greatest strength, with approximately one-third of our over 22,000 students having multilingual skills and possessing immigrant and refugee heritage, we celebrate 109 countries of birth and 116 languages and dialects spoken. Whereas Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 is federal law prohibiting school districts from discriminating on the basis of race, color, or national origin, and whereas the US Supreme Court ruled in Lawrie Nichols, 414 US 563 in 1974, that to comply with the legal obligations under Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, school districts must take affirmative steps to ensure that students with limited English proficiency can meaningfully participate in their educational programs and services, and whereas the decision of the Supreme Court of the United States in Piler v. Doe, 457 US 202 in 1982, ensures all children are legally entitled to equal access to a free public education regardless of immigrant, immigration status, and whereas the school board recognizes its statutory authority and responsibility to promote the effective, efficient, or safe management and operation of the school district pursuant to RCW 28A.320.015, and whereas RCW 28A.225.010 requires compulsory attendance for all students between the ages of eight and 18, and the Washington State Constitution Article IX preamble states, "It is the paramount duty of the state to make ample provision for the education of all children residing within its borders, without distinction or preference of account of race, color, caste, or sex." And whereas the presence of immigration enforcement officials in schools would cause extreme disruption to the learning and teaching environment for students, staff, and families, and whereas the board has been made aware that instances of harassment, intimidation, and bullying of students on the basis of national origin has increased. Now therefore be, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Directors of Evergreen Public Schools that to the maximum extent permitted under law, one, we reaffirm our commitment to a safe, welcoming, and inclusive environment for every student without regard to their race, religion, national origin, or immigration status, consistent with board policies R4, Student Safety, OE10, Safe Supportive Learning Environment, and the District Strategic Plan, whether in school buildings or during off-campus school activities. Two, we direct the superintendent to continue the ongoing staff training on their duties and responsibilities with respect to student safety. Three, pursuant to policy 3207 and its procedure, any school staff who observes, overhears, or otherwise witnesses harassment, intimidation, or bullying of a student or to whom such actions have been reported must take prompt and appropriate action to stop the harassment, intimidation, or bullying, prevent its recurrence, and report it to the building-level administrator and/or district HIB compliance officer. Four, pursuant to policies 3120, 3226, 4020, and 4300, and other policies, we direct the superintendent, all staff, and all volunteers to uphold student and family confidentiality and, A, to refrain from inquiring about or recording any student's immigration and family status; B, to refrain from unauthorized disclosure of immigration or family status; C, to actively monitor campuses for individuals entering or remaining on-school property without authorization; D, to urge students and their families to become familiar with the district's refugee and immigrant family resources webpage. Pursuant to policy 5281 and accompanying procedure, we direct the superintendent to apply disciplinary proceedings where policies have been violated. Six, we encourage families to have up-to-date emergency contact information on file with the district in the event of a student's primary caregiver is detained due to immigration status. And seven, we call on ICE and related federal agencies to reinstate the policy of not conducting enforcement actions in sensitive locations such as schools. Do I have a motion?
I move that the board adopts Resolution 7021 as presented.
I'll second.
Director Perkins moves that we adopt Resolution 7021 as presented, seconded by Director Boconegra. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to thank the board, Director Perkins, the students, and our staff for working really hard on this resolution. I know that you guys, before I was on the board, you did this years ago, and this is an updating of it, but we worked with students, and they were at Mountain View High School. They were very, very helpful in giving us some perspective on what they needed to help feel safe in this situation, so thank you to you all. Still having some technical difficulties, sorry. The next item on our agenda is public comments. Any community member wishing to address the board may do so during the designated time on the agenda for public comments. Comments are to be directed to the Board of Directors as a whole and may not be addressed to any individual member of the board, the administrative staff, or the audience. Although the board will not engage in dialogue, the board chair may ask a speaker a clarifying question or follow-up at a later time on the issue raised during public comment. General reminders: Each speaker has a maximum of three minutes this evening to ensure we hear from as many voices as possible. After the first hour of comments, we will take a 10-minute break. There is no mechanism whereby a speaker can donate some or all of their time to another speaker. No individual may speak more than once per regular meeting, even if there is time remaining. Please state your name and district affiliation if any. The first person up is Angie Bundah. Good evening.
Good evening, board. My name is Angie Bundah. I have two students in the district. Last week I emailed all of you some questions about the superintendent finalists, but only one responded to me. So here are some of the public's questions. Many find it odd there were only two candidates instead of three, and that the other candidate happened to live right here in Vancouver. They are concerned a full nationwide search may not have been done, and it feels almost as though choosing someone in town may have just been the cheaper option rather than to pay for airfare and lodging for other candidates. Human Capital used their superintendent search with Portland Public Schools as an example of what they could do for EPS, including multiple opportunities for the entire community to participate online and in-person with this search. After you chose Human Capital, the public thought that the example given is what we were paying for, and it has been disappointing to be shown one thing and then received far less. People are interested to learn exactly how their tax dollars were used. My husband is from Hawaii, and his family still lives there, very large family. Many members have reached out to say that Dr. Kishimoto was not a good superintendent for the state of Hawaii and was admin-focused instead of student or community-focused. I feel this should be shared with you, coming from people who directly experienced her leadership. To build trust in a strong bond with the community, hard things need to be discussed, valued, and dealt with together. I understand the hesitance to revisit the past, but after the amazing restorative justice workshop, it is clear that this distrust will continue to grow until the community sees attempts to address and restore the harm. We need a superintendent who will look past actions that have been swept, looked at past actions, excuse me, that have been swept under the rug and demand accountability. We need someone who will see how the staff expression policy is silencing our staff. These are the very people who have daily firsthand interaction with our students and who hold the most valuable opinions, experiences, and expertise. These people need to be able to safely share what struggles our students are facing so real positive improvements can be made. We need someone who will not only acknowledge the toxic culture being created by a few in the ASC, but who will be brave enough to address it by making the necessary changes rather than let it continue to weaken our staff's morale and the integrity of our district. There are so many who want to make a difference, but the intimidation and retaliation of speaking up about the true condition of our systems is too great. We don't need someone with all the answers, but we do need someone who is willing to face and acknowledge the hard questions and actively try to work with the staff and community rather than against it. We need someone who does not need our tax dollars to fund a golden parachute for an easy out should the job get tough, and who will be dedicated to put in the effort to make our district better. We aren't giving up on our schools, and we expect our superintendent to lead by example and do the same. By choosing to ignore community questions and simply focus on the present and look forward, you as decision-makers show that poor choices will not face any accountability and that transparency is not a priority. We need a superintendent who is dedicated to rise above this and change the current mindset and methods in our district. I hope that you will ask some of these hard questions yourselves and consider all these as you make your decision for our new leader. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Heather Killam.
Good evening, school board. I am here this evening to read a resolution on behalf of a clear majority of certificated staff at Columbia Valley. Resolution on Supportive Effective School Leadership. Whereas Evergreen Public Schools affirms that each member of our community, students, staff, families, and community partners is welcomed, included, and empowered, thereby forming the bedrock of our collective commitment to student success. Whereas EPS is committed to a student-centered approach which gives students an active voice in determining why, what, and how their learning experiences unfold, thereby ensuring that decisions at all levels are informed by the insights of students, their families, and community partners. Whereas our vision for student success declares that empowerment is built through learning, ensuring that both students and staff are enabled to achieve their personal and professional goals through continuous self-impeer advancement in learning. Whereas the EPS community is committed to fostering a safe, inclusive, and empowering environment where every member is valued and collaborative efforts are directed towards student success. Whereas the district's vision emphasizes the empowerment of students and staff to achieve their goals through a culture that supports ambitious teaching, student well-being, and academic risk-taking. Whereas effective school leadership is pivotal in creating environments where educators feel supported and valued, leading to improved student outcomes. Whereas micromanagement results in systemic failures in a complex school system in which a sole decision-maker, unable or unwilling to distribute responsibility, becomes overwhelmed and fails to follow through on routine tasks and communication. Whereas micromanagement undermines and discourages creativity and professional expertise and leads to low staff morale and staff turnover. Whereas the persistent use of retaliatory intimidating tactics by the principal creates a culture of fear eroding the culture of trust and collaboration which are essential for effective teaching and learning. Whereas the counterproductive nature of such practices not only threatens educator morale and professional growth, but also undermines the district's commitment to culturally responsive, culturally-inclusive, student-centered education that values every stakeholder's contribution. And whereas the district's commitment to employee engagement involves valuing staff opinions, experiences, and expertise in decision-making processes that impact them and their students, now therefore be it resolved that by affirming these whereas statements, we the undersized certificated staff of Columbia Valley urge the board to direct the superintendent to pursue a mutually, mutually agreed-upon solution to the issues we have laid out and ensure that administrative practices reflect the values of our district, ensuring that all educators are supported and empowered to provide the highest quality education to our students. This resolution is rooted in our unwavering commitment to excellence in education, and it is advanced with the hope that our voices as highly experienced educators will catalyze meaningful change that benefits our entire school community. To be clear, we remain committed, as we always have been, to student success through empowerment, inclusion, and mutual accountability.
Next we have Leslie Herman. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Evergreen School Board. We're honored, and humbled, and deeply saddened to be up here today presenting. We stand before you today not just as concerned educators, but as representatives of a staff that feels unheard, unsupported, and subjected to toxic work environment that is impacting our ability to serve our students effectively. We want to bring to your attention a vote of no confidence in our building's leadership. This is not a decision we came to lightly. It reflects a deep and growing concern over the intimidation, harassment, and bullying behaviors that our administration has demonstrated towards staff. Instead of fostering a culture of collaboration and respect, our workplace has become one of fear and retaliation. We are concerned with the nonexistent discipline of our building. Documentation of such behaviors are stunted, not encouraged, not followed through on, and it is not always communicated to parents in a way that supports students. In attempt to address these oncoming, ongoing concerns, our staff has been involved in mediation. However, the mediator was hired by HR, creating a clear conflict of interest. The process, rather than serving as a path towards resolution, has instead reinforced the power imbalance that exists in our building. Mediation should be a tool for genuine problem-solving, not another mechanism for controlling or silencing staff concerns. Although mediation is an appropriate process for many, this process doesn't address trust issues when our trust within our administration has been irrevocably broken. Additionally, HR's handling of this situation is only added to the confusion and distrust. Last week, an unprofessional email was sent to staff, and by the next workday, HR followed up with a completely contradictory message. This kind of inconsistency only deepens our frustration and raises serious concerns about the district's ability or willingness to effectively address the crisis in our building. Throughout all of this, we have felt a profound lack of support. Our voices have been dismissed, our concerns ignored, and our working conditions continue to deteriorate. This is not just about staff morale. This directly impacts the students and families we serve. A dysfunctional and hostile work environment does not create the best conditions for student success. We are asking for immediate and meaningful action from this board. We need accountability, we need oversight, and most importantly, we need leadership that values and respects its educators. We urge you to take this matter seriously and take steps to ensure that our workplace is one where educators feel safe, supported, and empowered to do the job we were hired to do, educate and support our students. Thank you, Columbia Valley certificated staff.
Next we have Catherine Furtick.
It's okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Catherine Furtick. I'm a parent of three EPS graduates and one senior. I want to first acknowledge that one thing we all likely have in common is that we all know our district needs stability and positive leadership to thrive, and that the lack of it has been crippling. Our community, your community, has grown skeptical and distrustful of leadership with due reason. We all need hope and confidence that we can move forwards towards a stability that uplifts and supports all who are involved in our students' educations. I encourage you to consider carefully the attributes shared in feedback from the community, employees, and focus groups, and how the finalists you chose align with those characteristics and values. It is crucial for a superintendent to be able to relate to the classroom experience of teachers and empathize with their challenges while also recognizing the challenges of administration and balancing the two. We need a superintendent who will work towards closing the divide of an us-versus-them tension that has been growing for years between parents and teachers with administration. We need a superintendent who will champion for our teachers' and students' needs and give them the value, respect, and esteem they are due. As well we know, the teaching environment is our students' learning environment. This concept cannot and must not get lost in the shuffle. Your decision in choosing our next superintendent carries so much weight for the future of our district and our children's education. Your community is giving you the opportunity by passing the levies to show them that you are truly listening to them and desire to honor that trust. Thank you.
Next we have Kayden Mizrahi Boyarsky.
Hello. Good evening. Before I begin, I want to give a special shout-out to Board President Jackie Weatherspoon, Director Rob Perkins, and Jamila Singleton. Without your tireless work behind the scenes, our community would feel truly invisible. Your dedication does not go unnoticed. I would also be absolutely remiss if I didn't give a special shout-out to Kayden, the young leader who stepped up and demanded excellence in spaces that often lack BIPOC presence. Your courage and leadership are paving the way for a brighter future. History is being written in real time, and in this political climate, every stance is being documented. Rest assured, there will continue to be a need for collaboration with community in the future. The work you put into this resolution is just the beginning of what we expect from our school board. Not long ago, schools were segregated, and some educators and school boards found themselves on the wrong side of history. The next four years will be remembered not just for the decision made, but for who had the courage to stand on the right side. Students and families in this community are watching. They are paying attention to where you choose to stand and the legacy you leave behind. The lack of diversity on the school board is more than just a demographic imbalance. It is a reflection of the systematic barriers that have long excluded minority voices from decision-making spaces. When leadership does not reflect the diversity of community, it serves the risk of implementing policies that overlook or misunderstand the lived experience of students and families of color increases. This gap makes it even more critical to create intentional platforms that uplift and center marginalized voices. True equity requires more than just representation. It demands a commitment to actively listening, engaging, and empowering those who have historically been sidelined. If the board does not reflect the community, then it must work twice as hard to ensure that those most impacted by its decisions have a meaningful seat at the table. Leadership is selfless, and in those positions of power must, and in, and in, and those in positions of power must recognize when their presence is limiting the process of those they serve. If the board and superintendent looks to its right and left and sees a lack of representation that does not reflect the student body, then perhaps it is time to take a meaningful action to close the gap. Marginalized voices cannot continue to be afterthought. It must be centered. True leadership is not about holding onto a seat. It's about ensuring that the right voices are in the room. If representation is lacking, then the most impactful decision, decision may be to step aside and make space for those who can truly speak and to the lived experience of the students and families this board is meant to serve. Lastly, I'd like to close. The new federal administration is not only targeting immigration and refugee families and students in the Evergreen School District, but also individuals across all racial, gender, and identity, identity, identity lines. Let this resolution be the first step in protecting all students, BIPOC students, those in the LGBTQ+ community, students with disabilities, and those from low incomes, ensuring that no group is further marginalized. Progress is made through sustained action, and the direction you choose to lead this community should reflect the diversity, needs, and voices the student body you serve. It is our responsibility to elevate and support every individual which is a community if we fell, what is a community if we fail to value its diversity? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, y'all, and good evening. Tonight, I thought that a student's perspective would be something of high value in this room. This resolution has not been a collaborative, easy, or fun in any way. It's been heartbreaking to hear each student feel the need to give you personal examples of their own trauma, just for y'all to work with the community. It's, it has been tiring for everyone to stay organized, write and edit their speeches, make posters, spend three different workshops in the same week to learn how to navigate policy, and then prepare to face the board. They all did this outside of the school without pay as well. The board's apathy and lack of respect for all students is felt widely. We have board members who don't see the value in immigrants, non-English-speaking students, or many others bring to our district. We have board members who agree with the federal administration that is committed to hate, division, and racism. We have a board, we have board members who are more committed to passing levies than they are to students, physical and emotional safety. As I am grateful for the work that we, that we made sure that the unjust sacrifices were, that were made to make this happen by our students and community leaders is highlighted. I would also like to thank some members in the community for making this happen. Alondra Abregos Viveros, thank you for being the most amazing advisor and advocate, and for also making sure that student voices are uplifted even when the district won't. Paul Porter for making sure that all students are heard and seen and helped making this happen. The one and only Clarissa Hightower for teaching our students how to navigate policy and being one of the most empowering people I know. Eduardo Torres for making sure that students are valued and that it is understood that we are why you guys are sitting in your seats. Dr. Jamila Singleton for being an advocate for all the students, even in the hardest times, and making sure all students are cared for. Jackie Weatherspoon for being an amazing collaborative partner and caring individual. Rob Perkins for speaking up about the importance of the challenges we are facing and making sure that our voices are heard. And all the parents that supported the students during these increasingly hard times. And finally, the amazing students who overcame the fears of big crowds, aggressive red screens flashing in their faces in a moment of fear, standing up to the ones who have put us down. And as I said in my last speech I gave here, you guys did not put yourselves in these seats. The parents have neglected students did. We will use the given power to make sure that we have a representative and proactive board that understands what it means to protect and serve students. Thank you.
Hello.
How you doing? As I stand before you today to address a reality that cannot be ignored, the school board does not reflect students and families it serves. The decisions made in this room impact thousands of students, students who came from diverse backgrounds, who speak different languages, who bring cultures, histories, and experiences that shape the fabric of this community. Let's be clear, representation is not just about optics. It is about perspective. It is about lived experience. It is about understanding the challenges that students of color, immigrant students, and other marginalized communities face, not just reading them in reports, but actually knowing what it feels like to navigate an education system that was never designed with them in mind. When leadership does not reflect the people it serves, blind spots, blind spots become policies, which is what would have took place with the resolution if it weren't for the students' very public protest and voice on public record. The policies have consequences. We see it in the lack of culturally responsive curriculum. We see it in discipline disparities that disproportionately harm Black and Brown students. We see it in the absence of bilingual support, in the barriers undocumented students face, and in the way funding is allocated. And when members of this board align themselves with ideologies that have actively worked to strip away rights from immigrants, people of color, and LGBTQ+ students, when board members have publicly supported a president whose policies have harmed the very students and in this district, it raises a very serious question: Whose interests are truly being represented here? And yes, we still remember which current board member have publicly took their stance on the wrong side of history. Makes me truly wonder where they would have stood in the 50s when it came to segregation, when people of color couldn't even learn in the same space. Only difference now is it's worse. They are trying to force our community out through deportation. But we also know that it is not just the visible decision-makers shaping the inequities in this district. There are those behind the scenes, those in positions of power, who have consistently manipulated their roles to maintain control rather than serve the students and staff that are entrusted to support. The Chief Operations Officer is a prime example. For years, we have watched as power has been abused as hiring...
Oh, we're not supposed to address...
My apologies. I want to do it again. And disciplinary decisions have been leveraged, not for fairness, but for control. And we are fully aware that this district has reportedly turned a blind eye, and through your actions, we clearly know why. Ignoring injustice does not make it disappear. Protecting those who misuse their authority does not serve students. It serves a system built on exclusion and silence. But let me be clear, we will not be silent. The time for passive leadership is over. The time for excuses has passed. Students and families are watching, and history is documenting where you stand. That means acknowledging systemic barriers that exist actively working to dismantle them, and it means holding every leader in the district, whether elected, appointed, or like I just mentioned, operating behind the scenes to a standard that serves the students, not their personal agendas. The district is at a crossroads. You can choose to maintain the status quo, to continue leading from a place of disconnect and privilege, or you can choose to be on the right side of history, to listen, to learn, and to make decisions that truly serve all students. Because quite frankly, they deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. Clarissa Hightower?
First, I'd like to take a moment to thank and appreciate the actions of the board members as it relates to pausing and listening to student voice before moving forward with the most recent proposed Board Resolution 7021. You not only paused, but you listened, and you then worked meaningfully to incorporate the students' input. This was a tough process for students, but interacting with you in this way helped them grow. This is a welcome indication that our board is indeed willing and able to respond to community input in ways that help us feel seen and valued. On a related note, I had the pleasure of attending the BIPOC Leaders and Allies Meeting last week, where Dr. Maloney invited Dr. Jamila Singleton to share some of the amazing work the Department of Student Equity and Family Engagement is doing to support students with tough issues, as mentioned this evening, including bullying and hate speech, which are very important to them. I wondered to myself why this work and many of the other things happening in this department are not being shared and highlighted during board meetings. So I inquired. Dr. Maloney reminded me and the group that board meetings are for the board, and the agenda is created by you all. So in the spirit of you continuing to respond to community input in ways that help us feel seen and valued, just as you did before, I have an inquiry and a request. My inquiry: Is the work of the Department of Student Equity and Family Engagement important to you all as a board? I would hope that your answer is yes. I can tell you that it is very important to me as a community member, as I had a daughter who recently graduated from this district, and I currently support students in the district. So I'd like to request that you add the work of the Department of Student Equity and Family Engagement to your agenda in ways that demonstrate its importance to you and to the community. I thank you kindly, and I look forward to your continued efforts to see and value community voice in meaningful ways. I also look forward to seeing what is important to you. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment. Next item on the agenda is to adopt our board consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move adoption of the board's consent agenda as presented.
Director Perkins moves to adopt the board consent agenda as presented, seconded by Director Wilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to adopt the superintendent consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt the superintendent consent agenda.
Second.
Director Bookenegre moves to adopt the superintendent consent agenda, seconded by Director Perkins. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is our superintendent report. Dr. Maloney?
Thank you. I want to start off with a celebration this week is Education Support Professionals Week, formerly called Classified Employees Week. And if you didn't know, this is a fun fact, this has been around for about 50 years. So it started in 1975 by the Public School Employees, or PSE is what we call that group. It includes bus drivers, custodians, food service workers, maintenance, paraeducators, our security secretaries, just to name a few of the myriad of positions that fall underneath the term of Education Support Professionals. I wanted to make sure that we recognize their hard work, their dedication to our students, and say a heartfelt thank you. Their work is so important to what we do every single day to create a welcoming environment that's supported by caring adults for our kids. And so a huge thank you to all of them. For the rest of my report, I'm going to reference certain operational expectation policies that align with the actions either myself or members of the Evergreen staff and administrators have taken that directly support those policies. So I'm going to start off with equity. Leadership gatherings this morning began with the elementary building leadership altogether in this room here, and it was packed. Our secondary one will occur on Thursday this week. And the focus that we started off was going through the professional development that was created by Dr. Singleton and her team on how to respond to bias and hate. And so these are modules that were prepared through her office and department and provided to all of our building leadership teams this morning, and we'll do that again for the secondary. And I wanted to make sure I said thank you to her. Under instructional program, that would be Operational Expectation 11, if you are wanting to make notes on that, at the same leadership gathering this morning, we reviewed data from a guaranteed viable curriculum audit. And you'll get lots more details later. We'll bring that forward for the board. It talked about, one of the data points was the literacy data alone included 680-plus classrooms that were walked into and 280-plus hours observed in those classrooms. So there were small chunks of time, and you'll get lots more details later, but I wanted to share that the overall growth data from last year to this year for literacy was 15%. And the overall growth data for math was 7.8% from last year. But again, you will get lots more information and details about that. As part of the instructional program policy piece, I have embedded in my daily work visiting schools. And so I wanted to list off a couple of schools that I was able to visit, some of them for the second or third time, some of them for the first time. So first time with students in it, let me make that clear. Okay, did lots of visiting over the summer, too. So the first time I was able to visit with students present at Home Choice, and so that was a great experience. I spent a great hour over there with the principal and walking around and seeing the teachers and students. I was over at Hollingsworth. I've been there before, great time there. Legacy Image, Marion, and Chehala. So in the last few days, I've been out and about checking out the instructional programs we have in our schools, and I know many board members sign up to join me on those visits. For community stakeholder relationships, that's OE3 if you're taking notes, Director Perkins. Columbia River Economic Development Council, the board orientation took place this last Wednesday, so I was there doing that. And I did have a great ride-along out in the county areas of our district and a little bit beyond as well with Clark County Sheriff Deputy Kip Branch. And so I really appreciate them being able to arrange that opportunity for me to see a lot more of the county and the perspective from law enforcement as well. Going back to equity under EO0, I had the opportunity to provide a refresher with Dr. Jamila Singleton. I keep saying doctor because she newly has her doctorates, and that's very important. For Courageous Conversations, and as you are aware, Courageous Conversations is a two-day required training for all new certificated staff coming into our district. And there's been some refreshers that have been provided through the years. But this was a refresher course specifically. I required all other superintendent leadership team and our Teaching, Learning, and Equity Department last Wednesday to spend half a day doing a refresher with Courageous Conversations. And that was very well received, and it was a great refresher for myself because I'd actually participated in Courageous Conversations as part of the professional development that we provided administrators when I was a chief academic officer in Pialup. Continuing with the operational expectation on equity, both President Jackie Weatherspoon and Director Rob Perkins joined me at Fort Vancouver High School in support of a family meeting that was held for students and families who were concerned about immigration enforcement. We're also joined by Police Chief Tori Price and our Mayor Ann McNary Ogul. I hope I'm not saying that correctly. We had our third BIPOC community leaders, as one of our public speakers mentioned today. That was last Wednesday. And we also were, I invited the mayor to come share again around immigration enforcement and the city's perspective and stance regarding that. And we had a great discussion and feedback that Dr. Jamila Singleton shared regarding our professional development around anti-hate and bias, and what we're doing to put supports in place for administrators or staff and our students to make sure that our schools are welcoming and safe environments for every single child. And the last part here is under Personnel Administration. I am pleased to announce we've hired two principals, and you've got the text in those emails that came through. We have Cherie Gomez-Clark for Evergreen High School, welcomed her there as principal, and Chris Griffith for Chehala Middle School. They both come with, obviously, with fabulous recommendations and references and a focus on students and student success. And so you'll be hearing more later this evening at our board workshop around our affirmative action plan as well. So we're talking about personnel administration. And I'd like to end with a thank you to Heritage student Henry. He is a student leader over at the Heritage Asian Student Union Club, and I got to spend almost two hours with the club. He reached out to me, and I was able to join his meeting with the students. We had great conversations that ranged from food service and pizza in the lunchroom all the way to executive orders and political things that are happening and how they may be affecting our schools and our students. And immigration enforcement was also part of the topics that we discussed. So I really enjoyed getting to know them all, and it was a great time because I learned a lot. So that concludes my superintendent report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is a Teaching, Learning, and Equity update. Dr. Brian Fox?
Good evening.
Good evening, President Weatherspoon, members of the board. For the Teaching, Learning, and Equity update this evening, I'd like to share some of the work being done to improve student achievement and eliminate the predictability of outcomes by demographic group. As promised at your last meeting, I'll be sharing about a comprehensive assessment system, an equity-based, multi-tiered support system, and a leadership framework which you've heard about already in the past, which includes a responsive system and instructional guide. In Washington State, students take state and federal tests regularly to assess their learning growth, as well as the progress of the educational system as a whole. At your last meeting, I shared assessment data representing student performance on the Smarter Balance Assessment and the Washington Comprehensive Assessment of Science. I talked about formative and summative assessments and gave examples of each, and then we looked at summative assessment data for ELA and math and science to see how Evergreen students were doing in comparison to the state average. When a school district formally organizes all of the assessments taken by students, it's called a comprehensive assessment system. This seems fairly straightforward, but it's actually quite complex. There are even tools designed to help a school district take an inventory of all the assessments across the system and evaluate their purpose and continued use. In Evergreen Public Schools, we're beginning this work and plan to carefully evaluate all that we do with testing, and so that we can ensure that when students are assessed, the results are used to improve instruction and help students. We want the test to measure what was taught, eliminate redundancy, and provide useful results. Dr. Heather Fowler is working with the team of people in TLE to evaluate our current assessments district-wide and to develop this comprehensive assessment system for EPS. Assessment data, however, is only as good as what is done with it. At your last meeting, I shared broad data about Evergreen students. It was summative assessment data lumped altogether and compared to state and national averages. What's more useful to educators is when we dig deeper into the data so we can make instructional shifts that best suit learner needs. For example, when we look at data for subgroups of students, we can make more informed decisions and pinpoint the instructional changes needed for individuals or groups of students. When a professional educator has the right assessment data presented in the right way, it's similar to a medical professional knowing what therapy or what medication to prescribe to someone who goes to the doctor. So instead of looking at Smarter Balanced Assessment data for English Language Arts and comparing it to the state average, we might be interested in pulling out just the data for third-grade students. We might see that most EPS third graders have very low test scores in a specific area like vocabulary or reading comprehension. And then with this knowledge, we might implement or prescribe a district-wide focus on vocabulary development or reading comprehension. You can see that formative and summative assessments are important in our system. Test results tell us how students are doing and help us decide what kinds of supports might need to be put in place to ensure student success. In TLE, we are working hard to organize a system of supports to help ensure all students succeed. Database decision-making is one component of a multi-tiered system of supports, or MTSS. MTSS is a framework that integrates academic and behavioral support into one system. This graphic from OSPI shows that MTSS consists of five components. I just finished talking about the comprehensive assessment system we are developing, and this icon demonstrates how one kind of data, test data, can inform decision-making. Next, I'd like to talk about a continuum of supports we are organizing in Evergreen to ensure all students can be successful. You may have seen me draw this little pyramid before. It represents the continuum of supports we provide, and this icon shows it as three tiers. Each of these tiers represents the support provided to ensure student success. They aren't places. They represent different teaching strategies designed to help students learn. Keep in mind that supports are not always academic-focused. The support could be related to behavior. The MTSS model moves away from treating academics and behaviors as separate areas, instead offering a tiered approach to all interventions. That's because often academic performance and student behavior are directly related. So let's begin at the bottom. We'll begin with excellent first instruction for all students. This is represented at the bottom of the pyramid, and we call this Tier One instruction. At this level, we ensure that every... At this level, we ensure that every student, honoring their background, identity, or learning needs, has access to rigorous, engaging, and culturally responsive teaching. This is where Bobby Height and several teams of educators in Teaching, Learning and Equity are doing all that work on the development of an instructional leadership plan, an instructional guide. Remember her presentation a few months ago to you. She talked with you about a guaranteed and viable curriculum, high-leverage practices, and the workshop instructional model that Evergreen teachers use. This is all Tier One, the kind of instruction that engages all students with the course materials and the learning taking place. We say our classrooms will be safe spaces where students feel a sense of belonging and are motivated to learn every day. It's in our strategic plan, and we call that phrase one of our pillars. That's Tier One Instruction in the classroom. And it could look like this, with students sitting at attention in rows. See, they all have their hands up. Or it could look like this, where students are working in pairs all around the room while the teacher directs their work. Engaging first instruction has many different forms and can look different from classroom to classroom and at different times of the day. I only have two photos here, but examples of Tier One Instruction are vast. The next tier, Tier Two, is when more intensive and individualized positive behavioral and academic interventions are provided for those students who need additional support. This might involve more opportunity for students to practice and receive specific and frequent feedback. It may involve more communication with families, and it's the hard work our professional educators engage in every day. Once again, Bobby Height is leading some excellent word, work with TLE members in developing what we call a responsive system, which may include more explicit instruction in a small group, maybe social-emotional learning instruction, maybe flexible learning environments where every student can thrive. That flexible learning environment is important to understand here in Tier Two Instruction. The support can be fluid depending on the needs of each student. Tier Two Instruction could look like this, where the teacher visits a group of students at the back of the room for some redirection or additional instruction. It could be one-on-one, like the picture on the right, where a teacher uses visual prompts that have been taught previously, but when a student needs a reminder or a refresher. Here are other examples of Tier Two teaching. These students may be typically very strong in other academic areas but need support in just one area. This is why the assessment piece I talked about earlier is so important. Teachers use formative assessment results to understand that a student could use some additional support, and then meets the child where they are to provide that support. This additional Tier Two support could be provided every day for the duration of a whole unit, or it could be provided just once to get a learner back on track. Test results will tell the teacher and the student when support is needed and when there is success. And lastly, Tier Three is the smallest part of the pyramid because it represents fewer students who may receive intensive interventions that are individualized to meet their needs. Often, this is the kind of instruction or support for students needing more than a traditional classroom can offer, even with the support of a responsive system. Tier Three support can be provided in the classroom or in another space. In either case, we want everyone to feel safe, welcomed, and valued for who they are anywhere in the school. And in EPS, we will create safe spaces that allow all students to learn. With the continuum of supports, we want to ensure that students receive the appropriate level of support for both academic and behavioral needs, with a strong emphasis on prevention and early intervention. And by doing so, we can help create a more equitable, inclusive, and responsive learning environment for all students. In Evergreen, our focus is on equity and inclusion and eliminating the predictability of outcomes by demographic groups. Therefore, we are calling MTSS an equity-based multi-tiered system of supports. Why equity-based MTSS? In Evergreen Public Schools, we prioritize equity in all aspects of our teaching, learning, and work, where everyone's voice matters and everyone has access to opportunities to realize their dreams. Our commitment to student outcome and success is rooted in the ideals of equity and inclusion. We believe each student can learn, so our efforts to improve student achievement must focus on equal access to excellent first instruction with an organized system of supports to ensure student success. To help us build and sustain a system-wide equity-based MTSS in Evergreen, we will partner with the Swift Education Center from the University of Kansas. They will support district leadership to align the work and operationalize our current work and formalize our equity-based MTSS, and thus improve equitable outcomes for all students. Swift is a proven leader in helping school districts develop equity-based multi-tiered systems of support. They've worked in some of our schools in Evergreen, and their expertise has proven quite valuable. Our partnership with the Swift Education Center begins in April and will continue through the summer. You can see that the state's MTSS framework includes five components, and tonight I just shared about two: database decision-making and the continuum of supports. As I mentioned, there's a lot of work going into the development of the continuum of supports we provide in Evergreen. And as mentioned by Dr. Maloney earlier today, all, this room was filled with elementary administrators and instructional coaches, where they were reviewing drafts of the responsive system and the instructional guide and other documents being developed as we work towards this MTSS. These documents represent much of the work already taking place in our schools and will help formalize our own equity-based system of supports. The feedback from schools is so important to the creation of a system we all understand and value, and I'm really actually very excited about the work that's being done in the team. In fact, at your next meeting, in fact, Dr. Maloney, or you were one step ahead of me, at your next meeting on March 25th, I've asked Bobby Height to review data from nearly 700 classroom visits conducted over the last several months. It will show the degree to which our guaranteed and viable curriculum is being implemented across the district. This presentation, along with a performance from a mariachi band from Mountain View High School, will make up the TLE update, and that's something for us all to look forward to. What questions or comments do you have?
I have no questions. Thank you for a very clear presentation. Looking forward to the data and the other reports that you have talked about in the presentation.
And thank you, Dr. Fox, for meeting with me last week. That was informative. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Board Comments. Anyone want to start?
I'll go, I'll start. This morning, Director Bokenegron and I did breakfast with the board at Legacy High School, where we met with about, I don't know, 10 to 12 students. Two things stood out to me the most. One was that they felt very connected to their teachers and to the staff, and they felt very grateful for them, and that the choice to go to that school sort of changed pretty much every life in that room and how grateful they were for that. Also, that they, they want, when it comes to sort of student interactions, bullying, those kind of things, they were asking for more one-on-one conversations where they were put in a room where they could talk to each other and talk, talk those kind of things out. And I thought that was really impactful because it was really wise of them to want to sit and talk with each other as opposed to this person gets punished and then this person gets punished. They had a lot to say specifically about just how that process worked for them at other schools and how they've experienced those sort of community circle type things and how helpful it's been for them. So I thought that was really interesting. Dr. Maloney mentioned that Director Perkins and I joined her at Fort Vancouver for a community meeting that echoed the one that we did here a couple weeks ago. That was very interesting, and each time I go to one of those, I learn more just about sort of just what these families are facing, the legal landscape and how it's changing. Because I think at one meeting, the attorney said something, and then it changed by the time that they came to the next meeting about what the expectations would be for those families. So I'm grateful that we were able to participate again and to continue getting that information out. I want to encourage everybody who can to come to our meet and greet tomorrow to meet the candidates. It's been a long road to get to this point, and we appreciate all of your input and your And I also want to thank the teachers for coming out and speaking to us tonight and for sharing your resolution in your letter with us, and to the other members of the community who spoke. Thank you very much.
I'll just add one thing on the Legacy visit this morning. It was great. It's so, it's fun to see when students, because we, you know, we've been doing some workshops around restorative justice, and so it's great to see that the students recognize that as a, as a way to help mend fences with each other and not really to separate them, but really to get them in a room together and talk through it. And so it was a great morning. Thank you, Jackie, for going with me. Also, I got to take along with Dr. Maloney to the visit at Image, and that was a lot of fun. The students and staff were great there, and a lot of the kids asked for my help that day, so hopefully I didn't hurt anything, but it was a lot of fun. It was, it was great to do a couple of school visits this week.
Yeah, I want to thank all the people that spoke tonight. I appreciate all those comments, and I believe this board has a diversity of thought, and I believe each board member brings strengths and weaknesses, just like everyone in this room has strengths and weaknesses. I know for me, my daughter being on the autism spectrum, my youngest, just kind of I've been able to share throughout my year-plus on the board some thoughts about that. So yeah, there's always room for improvement, but also Columbia Valley, sorry the mediation didn't seem to go quite as well as it could have, and I'd be willing to be part of another mediation team if that was in the works, but I could offer that, so. And lastly, concerning the human capital, I've been a bit of an outspoken critic. I had hoped for more, maybe more of a town hall type of, yeah, thanks, atmosphere for tomorrow, but I sent them an email a week, two weeks ago and have not heard back, so just hoping for more in that area, but we may not get it, so, but thank you.
I want to thank those who came to speak about the, the resolution and the process that we had with the students and just talk a little bit about what I think this is about. A lot of these policies that we cite have been in place, almost unmodified, I think, for many years, especially since 2017, when worry about police action in schools for civil violations like immigration was also on the rise. And we knew, the whole board, that we needed to address that worry. The student input was extremely valuable, and it enabled us to, with their help, to craft something that contains their voice. I don't want to say that this is something that is accomplished, because they also raised issues in those meetings that I am keen to see some reforms about with them, notably just the way that we directed in the resolution that every staff member should be watching for those microaggressions, those moments of harassment and bullying, and interrupting that. And as we get into that, you called it Hate and Something Protocol?
Yeah, Anti-Bias and Hate.
The Anti-Bias and Hate Protocols. I am, I'd be very supportive of everyone from a point-to-FTE employee to a full-time teacher and administrator, being able to have some clear access to that protocol and to understand what to do. Our teachers and our peer educators and all the people who work at the schools are the ones who know our kids best and they're best situated to apply all of that knowledge. I was at the community meeting at Fort Vancouver High School, and something that Mayor McNairy-Ogle said really struck me. She got a question about, there are some claims in the, at the federal level now that unless certain things take place locally, that federal funding could be withdrawn. And she was asked, what will you do if you're faced with a loss of federal funding for something or in order to implement or reverse a policy that it's clear the community wants? And she said, we will not back away from our values, and we will prioritize our residents over funding. And I want to, that seems to me to be a really good model. She modeled some really good leaderships that we, as we make our plans for the budget next year, should not let go of our definitions that we developed with community and with the staff of diversity, equity, and inclusion. We know what that means here for us, and we know that it's broader than the caricature that certain factions are spreading, right, in the national scene. So I'm hoping that we'll continue to use our definitions as we have them in our strategic plan and not back down from them. And then I guess on a, on a less serious but also serious note is the visit to Marion Elementary School that I had with Superintendent Maloney, where we got to see a dual-immersion kindergarten class. Every time I spend 10 minutes in a dual-immersion kindergarten class, I come out with more Spanish vocabulary and a better understanding of how that language is sung. And there was some singing in that class. The same, I guess the same attention techniques that you'd apply in English apply just the same for kindergartners in Spanish, and it was wonderful to see that kind of mastery on display and the way the kids responded to that teacher. I've forgotten her name. Do you remember? I do remember, I'm sorry, too. I do remember that we also saw a fourth grade class. And because I was a student at Marion in the old building, what I saw in Mr. Deveraux's fourth grade class, he was teaching some science, had me thinking back to my experience in the fourth grade and the way we learned science and other subjects. And I was just really impressed by the way that the teaching arts have evolved since, dare I say, 1979, and the way that he engaged with his students when they deviated from his instructions. And he roped that deviation back into the lesson. He wanted them to go after animals in their research, and one student went after plants instead and still found evidence that supported his lesson, and so he included that. And just the way he handled the crowd and, and those students and our visit was pretty exemplary, and I wanted to honor him for that tonight. Beyond that, I just want folks to know that our equity work is ongoing and that I appreciate the feedback and hope to collaborate with these students and with many others as we go forward. We want to have a safe school. We want the bullying to stop, and we want your help. That's all I have.
Can I add one more thing, Jackie? I just wanted a reminder for next Thursday evening, the 20th, is the Region Six meeting at Ridgefield School District. They're hosting at this time, so I think a couple of us were signed up to attend. It's leading with purpose.
It's leading with purpose is the agenda topic.
The time is 6:40 PM, and the board is going to go into a recess, assigned documents, followed by a workshop about our affirmative action plan, a legislative update, and board protocols and calendaring. This meeting is adjourned.